Bye now for the Sunday holiday.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and bring the Tuesday, July 5th, 2016 Warranten Board of Alderman Meeting to into session. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next time in, the consent agenda items.
First item is the regular meeting minutes from June 21st, 2016, and approval to rehire Justin Unger as a police officer with a start date of June 24th, 2016 at nineteen dollars and twenty-nine cents an hour.
Justin available, step in so everybody can see him. We have some probably aren't familiar with him, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Jay, if you're not familiar, this is Justin Unger. He's workforce rehiring.
Hello. Good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for having me back.
All right, now entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Miller, roll call vote.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Other person constantly is absent, Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, one absent. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Next time agenda, we're hearing from the public. We'd ask anybody who'd like to come up and speak, they come up to the podium, state your name, and we ask that you keep it to your five minute maximum. All right, not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Next time agenda, the Board of Alderman comments.
No comments this week. Does that surprise everybody?
No.
I may have one question for Chief of Police. I was not here Friday or Saturday night, but some of my neighbors were complaining that even though the fireworks were supposed to be five to ten on the Fourth of July, that there was a lot of them going on Friday and Saturday. I guess my question would be, were you, was manpower again chasing down a lot of complaints for that, and would it have been maybe a better idea to go ahead and say, let's have the fireworks for the weekend, like the first through the fourth, or something like that? You got any comment on that, Chief?
Yeah, I, well, first of all, let me back up. The guys wrote seventeen summonses for fireworks over the weekend. So they were definitely out there chasing the calls down. They were, they got a lot of calls, and they did a lot of proactive, you know, if they saw somebody doing something, they'd stop and they'd write them a summons. But yes, they spent an inordinate amount of time on the days leading up to chasing down those calls. You know, I don't know if opening up that window wider is the right thing to do. You know, my opinion is that if, if the word gets around, and I expect that it will from this year, that the police department actually is instituting a zero tolerance policy, then next year I think we'll see better results leading up to. You know, it's one of those things that we tried very hard to push the information out. I know the newspaper helped us, the city put signs out. You know, we put it in every place that we possibly could to try to reach as many people as we could that were absolutely not tolerating fireworks prior to the Fourth, but on the Fourth between five and ten, have at. And there were a lot of people that did between five and ten yesterday. In fact, down around my neck of the woods, it sounded like pretty much a war zone.
Yeah, same here.
But, you know, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say it might not have been as bad leading up to, I think there were some people who said, hey, okay, I appreciate that, City of Warrenton.
Save it up.
That, yeah, that you are giving us a legal window to do that, and they did save it. And then, you know, there's, there's always gonna be the folks who wanna push the limit and see if they can get by with it. And, you know, those are the folks that are gonna come see the judge.
Those seventeen, were those for the whole weekend, or was that just, just on the?
That's, that is for the whole weekend. Most of those were on Sunday, and that was really the day that man, they ramped it up. And I think, you know, something else that worked in our favor was all the rain. But, you know, Sunday, Sunday during the day, Saturday during the day, people got out to the fireworks stands and bought their toys, and then on Sunday it was just, it was mayhem.
Well, I know, I was just wondering, because I know some of the surrounding municipalities, they have a longer window. The Wright City, I know had, I think it was the first through the Fourth, I think, where my daughters live, Forestale, off of Point Prairie Road, I think theirs was the same way, the first through the Fourth. So, but I was just wondering if that, what your feeling was on that. So, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
That's all I have.
Anything else? All right. Moving on to Mayor comments, I've got just a couple. One, I will say, I think, as many people disagree, I think it was effective on what we did. I know, I feel with a couple complaints over the weekend, but I don't think any of them were too just. I think, it was one of those things that you can never appease everyone. But what I will, what I will say, I noticed last night was around our neck of the woods, there was only one person who shot off after ten o'clock. Other than that, and I talked to some people that were north of town, midtown, and south of town, and they said the same thing, maybe one or two stragglers. For the most part, everybody shut it down right around ten, ten-thirty.
Yeah, and, you know, the guys really did a good job. As soon as ten o'clock hit, they were on it. You know, I was listening, I was monitoring, and, you know, as, as those calls started coming in right after ten o'clock, and people kept shooting them, they got on it. And I would say by eleven o'clock, it was really super quiet. There were just an occasional somebody sneak out and try to pop something off, but it was pretty quiet.
I would like to acknowledge Leo Niffen, is that correct? Leo's with the Boy Scouts, and he's here working on his mayor pad for communications. So, I appreciate you coming in and sitting in and listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, that's pretty much all I got, so we'll move on to the discussion of proposed development agreement. Rob, is it Clark?
Clark.
You would please come forward. Rob is with the Armstrong Teasdale, correct?
That's right. Good evening, Mayor, and Board members, again, Robert Clark with Armstrong Teasdale. This is a reminder, I am here on behalf of RAK Development, which is a entity controlled by Raw Walters Development. Art King, the principal, was here at previous meetings to talk about his plans for the potential redevelopment of the outlet center. And I'm here basically to go over some of the changes from the term sheet that you all approved back in a month and a half ago, to the development agreement that you have before you, and then I'm happy to answer any questions about it. Most of what is in the development agreement is simply either a clarification or putting more detail around the general concepts that were in the term sheet that you all saw. There were some things that are new, but all in keeping with some of the information we got from the engineering that's been done over the past month and a half, and from some of the ongoing discussions among the various property owners regarding the details of the timing of when they would contribute their rights of way, of their rights of way, and how they would share certain costs and expenses. So, some of those costs that the owners will bear will be shared on a pro-rata basis, on the basis of their acreage. That was something that was not completely clarified in the term sheet. There is a reference to, on the south side of the interchange along the service road, the city constructing an extra wide drainage ditch that could, in the future, when the south side properties are developed, allow those owners to relocate the, is it's in creek, so that it'll flow into that drainage ditch. They'll still need to meet the other requirements of the city stormwater code, but there was minimal incremental cost to make that ditch a little bit wider, and from the engineer's perspective, it was something the city could do as part of the development agreement that would make development of that south side much more feasible when it's ready to go. There were some clarifications regarding the exact timing of the conveyance of the rights of way and easements by the owners to the city in connection with the interchange construction, primarily that MODOT has to specifically and formally have approved that the city can move forward with the acquisition of right-of-way before anybody is obligated. Obviously, some of the other things the city will need to do is provide the form of the deed and the easement with the exact legal descriptions before they have an obligation to convey. And the city will, of course, by that time have secured sufficient financing for the project, because presumably if sales tax measures are adopted, the interchange project will go forward. With respect to the unincorporated property on the north side of the interchange, it clarifies that the annexation must be completed prior to the rights of way and easement areas for that area being donated to the city. And it also provides that, to the extent that any of those properties are being used for agricultural, they can continue to farm that land until the city's actually ready to construct the improvements on that interchange. One other clarification the owners asked for was that if, for whatever reason, the interchange construction doesn't commence within three years, that any rights of way that were donated would be reverted back to the owners. If we get to the point where the city gets those rights of way, it's almost certainly going forward with the interchange, because it will have gotten MODOT approval, and will have the financing necessary to move forward. So there's very little likelihood if the right-of-way is conveyed, that it would ever revert. There are some other clarifications with regard to the annexation of the property on the north side with respect to utility access, and, you know, who will provide service, and whether or not the water district will provide a release. That obviously is all dependent on the water district and not the city's responsibility. And there are certain requirements with respect to that property owner, that if he wants to rezone the property as part of the annexation, he needs to do so within a timely manner, so that the city can complete that prior to interchange construction, so that the annexation can actually be finally completed. Lastly, the clarification on that property coming in, having to pay the same connection fees for utilities as any other property under the city code, and that it has to comply with stormwater codes with respect to any development. The city will be also agreeing to put in a sanitary sewer sleeve under the interchange overpass on the north side, so that when the property on the north side does develop, there'll already be a sleeve there for the owner to put in the sanitary line. The city won't have to construct the line itself. The owner will have to get, you know, utilities from their site to the connection at the property line, but this will at least put in a, an area that it can connect through when they're ready to go. And that's, again, a minimal cost item that the city engineer indicated wouldn't cost, you know, much and could be done as part of the construction, and save a significant amount of money in terms of future development. And then lastly, there's a significant release and indemnification provision that protects the city for, and its officials with respect to any liability under the agreement. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any specific questions regarding the development agreement.
Well, I think I asked you before the meeting about the issue of the ditch. I think you clarified what that is. And what is the formal procedure for the annexation? So typically, if somebody wants to annex to the city, they would file a request to be annexed in. Does that go before PNC?
No.
In this case, it does not normally, or in this case?
It does not normally, and it will not go in this way. It's, you know, we're assuming, and if you look at, I think it's Exhibit A, is it?
It is Exhibit D, which is a form of voluntary.
So I'm glad I asked, Rob. It's Exhibit D, which is our petition. They petition the Board of Alderman and the city, essentially, they petition to come in, we hold a public hearing. There's a period of time in which objections can be filed by residents of the city and/or there's a percentage they have to meet, or the property owner himself. If that's not, no objections are filed, then you approve the annexation, I believe, the following meeting. So it's a pretty simplified process, it gets a little more complicated if there's a protest, but it's a pretty difficult number to reach to protest it, so.
And the only reason that there's references to rezoning is because currently, unincorporated, I believe the property is zoned as agricultural. To the extent that the property owner would be looking to do a development at some point in the near future, if the interchange were to move forward, they would likely seek a rezoning of the property once it was annexed into the city. That would be on them to do. They have a very limited period within which they have to request the rezone, and then the city would presumably consider it in its normal process. It would go to the planning commission, and then it would come to the board with a recommendation one way or the other, and then would be considered by you all with a specific request for a zoning designation. That's if the property owner wants to request. If they don't request within the timeframe provided, they retain the zoning that's there, the annexation is deemed complete, they would have to give the right-of-way when the city requested it.
But they can in the future, then, even if they don't go through with the redevelopment in the future, they can always request.
Correct. That's right. If they choose not to do it now, presumably several years down the road, when they might be ready to develop at that point, they would ask to rezone.
Doesn't prohibit them from asking in the future.
Correct, correct. This is if they wanna have the assurance that it's done the timely and the way they want it now, they can do that. If they're not worried about it at the time, they can wait and do it whenever.
What is the role of the planner? It says, if the city sales, this I'm bringing, if the city sales tax is approved, you shall engage a planner to prepare a development plan. What is, who's the planner, what? How is that represented?
The redevelopment plan is something that would be required under the Tax Increment Financing Act, and there's certain enumerated things that it would have to contain. It typically would contain an analysis to determine whether the property qualified as a blighted area under the statute. It would contain the current land uses and expected land uses upon redevelopment. It would contain the list of eligible redevelopment project costs that might be paid for with tax increment finance. It would create a budget for each project area, although most likely it would only create a budget for the first project area, which is the outlet center, the only project really ready to go at this time, and then would defer to some future point what the specific budget would be for the other project areas when they're ready to move forward. So those are the things that the planner will be pulling together from various public records, from the owners themselves, and so forth.
So the question, I guess the question is, who is the planner? Is that somebody that the commission chooses? Is that the planner typically, one of the developers?
Typically, the city would, would request qualifications and would select the planner.
So it could be any, anybody, not necessarily even related to the project?
It would likely be an independent planner, that's right. And the city would, I know the city had a feasibility study prepared by a planner, it could be a planner like that, it could be other, you know, similar, similar situated companies that do economic development consulting.
And they would be hired by the city, or by the?
They would be hired by the city, paid for by the owners.
By the owners, okay.
Yes.
But they would be eligible for reimbursement costs?
That cost, correct. That cost would be a reimbursable cost out of the, each owner's tax increment financing, that's correct.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Actually have our representative here from Gilmore and Bell, Shannon, who, they are the ones who will help us with that planner process. In fact, she's already worked on the RFP to start that process, so that we're ready when it's time to do it. So, we have a specialist to help us get through that process when the time comes.
Any other questions?
The other thing I noticed in the agreement that talks about the exchange with the highway department, the maintenance on the overpass, and we talked about, that's, that's mentioned in the agreement, but it's not part of the development agreement, I take it. You know, we talked about before, is they would cover maintenance on the overpass, in exchange, the city would do something else. And that's really not detailed in here, but it's probably not appropriate that would be detailed in here, is that fair to say?
Right, there will be an agreement with MODOT that will spell that out. It looks like right now, based on our conversations with them, that the city will have MM from that southern roundabout on the south side. So it looks like that will be the trade, is for city to have MM on the south side of the interchange, and then they will take the maintenance of the overpass. But that will be the subject of an agreement directly with MODOT that will spell out all of those parameters.
Right, and all this agreement says is that, in the context of the city constructing the interchange, it's the city's responsibility to figure that out with MODOT. And the owners really have no say in that whatsoever.
Okay. The other thing I noticed in here, if I found a mistake, I didn't, but, you know, references the redevelopment area, so I went back and looked under the definitions, I didn't see redevelopment area, but I see farther on, it talks about, there can be multi-redevelopment areas under this agreement, correct? Depending on how the projects come in.
Yes, there is, the entire area, which is all of the four owners' holdings, would be the redevelopment area. And then within that, there would be what are called under the statute redevelopment project areas, so individual project areas. So, at this point, there could be up to six discrete project areas within the overall area. And each one of those project areas could then be activated at a different time. The one thing that we fully expect is that the outlet mall redevelopment project area would be activated right when the city would consider approval of the tax increment financing. And so the Raw Walters would be ready to start immediately. Thereafter, it's up to the other three owners as to when they would specifically wanna activate their other, up to five project areas.
So when somebody asks you, asks us the question, oh, where's the redevelopment area? Redevelopment area is really extremely large.
Yes, it's the entire, it's the entire.
Some people tend to think of it as simply the, the old outlet center, but it's really the area encompassing the north and the south of, of the whole interchange.
Correct. It's the hundred and eighteen point eight acres that's referenced at the very beginning of the agreement, that's the entire redevelopment area, and then within that, there could be up to six specific project areas.
It was all clear? All right, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda would be hearing from Shannon, I hope I don't butcher her last name, Creighton?
Creighton.
Creighton, with Gilmore and Bell, in regards to the ordinance creating a TIF commission.
Good evening. Again, my name is Shannon Creighton, and I am an attorney with Gilmore and Bell. We've been engaged to act as special counsel to the city in connection with this project. There are two items beyond the approval of the development agreement that I'm gonna briefly talk about, the ordinance creating the TIF commission, and then there is the resolution adopting policies and procedures related to TIF. If you all have any questions, feel free to interrupt. But very briefly, first, the ordinance creating the TIF commission. So this is actually the first legislative step in implementation of tax increment financing. Before you all can approve a redevelopment plan, that was just discussed by Rob, or implement TIF in the area, a TIF commission needs to be created, made up of eleven individuals representing all of the taxing districts within the redevelopment area. There will be six representatives appointed by you all, two appointed by the school districts, two by the county, and one representing all other taxing districts in the area. Now, once the commission's created, they will review the redevelopment plan that is created by the planner, and hold a public hearing related to that plan. They will then make a recommendation to you all. You all have the final say in whether the redevelopment plan is adopted and TIF is created. The, the recommendation by the TIF commission, if they do not recommend you adopt the plan, can still override that recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. So, again, this is just the first step in the creation of the TIF. Are there any questions on that ordinance? Notices to the taxing districts will be distributed by the city tomorrow for their requesting their appointments to the TIF commission, but based on the schedule, we anticipate the initial meeting to be sometime in Oc, in October. And again, all of this is contingent on the sales tax passing in August. The second piece of legislation is the resolution adopting policies and procedures. Under the TIF Act, the, a city's authorized to implement TIF if they have procedures in place related to requesting development proposals for the use of TIF. So the resolution that's before you just establishes a very generic set of policies and procedures. There will be proposals, RFP sent out to potential developers through the area, beyond the property owners that are already there, there will be a much larger list. When proposals are received, they'll be reviewed and then a developer selected for each of the redevelopment project areas.
Can we go back to the number count again? So there'll be eleven members on the TIF committee, six will be city-appointed, two will be county, two will be school district, and one will be emergency, library, whatever else.
Right. And so all of those entities will need to gather together and agree on the one individual.
Well, they, they're gonna be the ones who hire the planner, or is the city hiring the planner?
No, the city hires the planner. The other taxing districts will need to get together to agree on their one commissioner that will review the plan. Any questions?
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda will be the approval of temp liquor by the drink caterer liquor license for Ron's Family Restaurant for Fall Fest 2016. Entertaining motion to approve the temporary liquor by the drink caterer liquor license for Ron's Family Restaurant for Fall Fest 2016. So moved. Motion made by Alderman Miller, second by Alderman Schultz, roll call vote please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, one absent. Next on the agenda, we're hearing from Operations and Finance Officer Terry Moore.
My first item for you this evening are the results of the TRISM Commission meeting on June 28th, 2016. The commission met and discussed the request for funding from the City of Warrenton. This was a request for a thousand dollars for attendance prizes for concerts in the park, two hundred and fifty per concert for the four concerts that are planned. The TRISM commission has been discussing for a while now ways to try to encourage a higher level of attendance at these events. So they talked about having attendance prizes, this was actually Beats headphones for this particular event. They also had, the cheerleaders were there and had some food service, which was very well-received, and I think the attendance was definitely up for this last concert in the park. So, the efforts that they're making to try to encourage attendance are certainly working, certainly not to the level that we hoped for at some point, but we are making steps in the right direction. So they had this as a budgeted item, and have recommended approval of the thousand dollars at two hundred and fifty per concert for the four concerts that are set up for this year in the park.
Well, go ahead and springboard off that and say that I've spoke with, spoken with several people who were happy to see the cheerleaders out there. They said they weren't the typical teenagers that were mundane and forced to be out there. They had a great attitude, which really helped out. They just really kinda tickled pink to see youth in our community being involved and doing things. So I agree with you.
I guess the other thing, reading through, and this doesn't have to do with the park, but I was interested in reading through the tourist commission minutes on the Fall Festival, which, you know, I think all of us should be talking of. Currently, there's seven alcoholic vendors, there's thirteen food vendors, and there's fifteen other vendors, and it looks like we got the bands booked, we got a car judge this time, so it'll be scrambling out the last minute. So it looks like an exciting event with prizes and everything, it's part of what the tourist commission is doing.
We're anticipating five thousand.
I guess we walk you down.
It's gonna be interesting.
Terry, one question. I know Brandy had emailed me earlier in June, I think it was, about if, if I I know Brandy had emailed me earlier in June, I think it was, about if I knew of any other people that were interested in as far as liquor vendors for that day. But now that we have seven, does she feel that's a good, comfortable number?
I believe that we would be more comfortable with at least a couple more if we can get people to sign. We're amazed, because in the past, having enough liquor vendors was never an issue. So we're kind of surprised that more of the local clubs aren't interested in that, and we think, because one of the biggest complaints, when we've had high-volume turnout in the past, is people having to wait in line for an hour to get a beer, which makes them very unhappy, or for food, for that matter. So we feel like that if we could get a couple more, we would be more comfortable, but seven, I think, is the minimum to handle the level of crowd that we're anticipating. But if there are others in the community or know someone who might have an interest or a club that might have an interest in doing that, it needs to move quickly, though, because the time to get the liquor license approved is quickly expiring.
So are they anticipating such a high turnout, basically because of the appeal of the band?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the promoter.
This will be their only, their only appearance. I think in the past, when they've been further, you know, in Illinois, and I think in several places over there, so they're, we were fortunate enough to book them, lock them in, and follow the rule if they couldn't, what was it, 90 mile, 90 or 100 mile?
Radius.
Radius, if they could not perform within a month, so.
Which we've already had.
And these guys.
Questioned on us.
Huh?
Which we've already had questioned.
Yeah. And plus, I think these guys played at some of these bigger car shows and stuff like that, so they're known, have a following with that group too, so. We'll see. Be interesting.
It'll be a busy day in town that day.
Yes. Looking forward to it.
I'll go and entertain a motion to approve the tourism recommendation in the amount of $1,000.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, second by Alden Schell Harvey. We got a roll call, vote please.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, one absent. Entertaining motion for the first reading of Bill Number 25-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Miller, second by Alden Schell Harvey.
An ordinance, a zoning ordinance as authorized under Section 405.390, the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri approving a site plan for Emo's Restaurant and Retail Stores located at 609 North Highway 47.
Entertaining motion for the second reading in passage of Bill Number 26-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, second by Alderman Ock.
A zoning ordinance authorized under Section 405.390, the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri approving a site plan for Emo's Restaurant and Retail Stores located at 609 North Highway 47.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, one absent.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. Next on the agenda would be hearing from Finance Manager, Gereal Creighton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month in the amount of $553,142.70.
I can motionably approve the bills in the amount of $5,553,142.70.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, second by Alden Schell Harvey to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $553,142.70. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, one absent.
The next item I have is the financial report for the month of May. Sales tax is 4% over budget. Building permits, there were two new residential permits issued, and then there was also, like, two water connections and sewer connections, because they're all kind of together. Industrial sewer is below budget for the month, although it is higher than it was last month. Do you guys have any questions about any of that?
No, I think the only question I had, I said it earlier to Terry, because, you know, the athletic complex lease is so far below budget in terms of revenue, but I guess that's the direct result of all the rain and washed-out tournaments and all those things that we've experienced, so I think June's not going to be much better previously.
The good news is, we have booked a tournament for this weekend that has 29 teams coming.
Really?
So, hopefully.
Hopefully.
It'll be a very large tournament for this weekend.
And then we start the road project, right? So since we have 29 teams in and out, then we can start?
No, not quite yet.
Not quite yet.
Ball season needs to be over.
Oh, okay. All right.
Any other questions? No. Thank you. All right. The next item would be the bill of ordinance. Grab the water and get ready. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 25-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Delloy, second by Alden Schell Harvey.
An ordinance accepting plat of the subdivision known as Dave's subdivision by the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
Entertaining motion for the second reading in passage of Bill Number 25-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, second by Alden Schell Harvey.
An ordinance amending Section 700.120, the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Entertaining motion for the second reading in passage of Bill Number 27-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Miller, second by Alden Schell Harvey.
An ordinance amending Section 700.120, the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri establishing rates for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, one absent. Entertaining motion for the first reading of Bill Number 28-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alden Schell Harvey, second by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance amending Section 705.210 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Entertaining motion for the second reading in passage of Bill Number 28-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Miller, second by Alden Schell Harvey.
An ordinance amending Section 705.210, the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, one absent. Entertaining motion for the first reading of Bill Number 29-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, second by Alden Schell Harvey.
An ordinance of the city of Warrenton, Missouri approving a development agreement related to the proposed construction of an interchange and the redevelopment of the Warrenton Outlet Center and certain adjacent properties.
Entertaining motion for the second reading in passage of Bill Number 29-16.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Delloy, second by Alden Schell Harvey.
An ordinance of the city of Warrenton, Missouri approving a development agreement related to the proposed construction of an interchange and the redevelopment of the Warrenton Outlet Center and certain adjacent properties.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, one absent. Entertaining motion for the first reading of Bill Number 30-16.
So moved.